We'll start our meeting today, please. It's Monday, May 6th. It's a special meeting of the City Council, our budget hearing. And we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Dominguez. Councilmember Rebs. Mayor Perotam Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon is absent. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Maria.
Here.
And Councilmember Sneddon.
Very good. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? I don't see anyone out there, so we'll close that. And we'll go to our primary item. Madam Clerk, what is that?
That's fiscal year 2020 recommended operating and capital budget.
Very good. Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. This is first of many budget work sessions that you will have to go over the proposed FY 2020 operating budget. The budget is available online at the city's website. It's also available at our libraries. And you can also call City Hall to request a digital copy if you'd like as well. This is the first budget hearing. Today, we have Airport, the Waterfront Department, and the Solid Waste Budget before you. This is your opportunity to ask questions. We have presentations for you, and we'll get started with Airport, if that's okay.
And people can find the schedule on our website for different topics?
Yes, absolutely. That schedule is also posted on our website about when the different departments are coming before you.
Very good. And we'll start with our Airport Department.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Today, we are here to present the 2020 operating and capital budgets for the Airport Enterprise Fund. The recommended budget we will present represents a significant effort on the part of the airport team. This budget takes into account the need to address some very exciting and positive changes that we've seen over the past year and more to come in 2020. We have also met with our airline partners and discussed the proposed rates and charges that drive this budget, and I'm happy to say that there were no objections to the budget. In approaching this budget, we have been very optimistic with our revenue projections and very conservative in estimating our expenses. And finally, we've presented this budget to our Airport Commission, and with their approval, we now bring it to council for final review and approval. And with that said, I have Mr. Tom Bullers, who will take us through the details of our budget. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. Just a brief overview of our presentation outline. We'll talk briefly about the Airport Department as a whole, then we'll move into our proposed fiscal year 2020 budget and some of the major drivers of that budget. Then we'll move into the cash flow projections for the upcoming years and some adjustments that we'll be returning to council for at a later date. Finally, we'll move into some key initiatives and performance objectives, including the airport's capital program. So just a brief overview of the department. The airport is an enterprise fund, and it's financially self-supporting. Our revenues are generated from tenant rents and user fees, and no local taxes are used to support the operation of the airport. The airport is certificated by the FAA, and along with that FAA regulations, we also have a lot of TSA regulations, especially in the areas of security and safety. The airport functions almost like a small city unto itself. We have a facilities maintenance group, a planning group, our own police force, firefighting, aircraft firefighting, and business leasing and property management. For 2020, we're recommending a total of 64 FTEs. That's an increase of one FTE over the current fiscal year 2019. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but it will be in the Business and Property Management section. You can see the bulk of the airport's positions are in the Maintenance, Security, and Certification and Operations Groups. The airport also contracts with the Fire Department for nine aircraft rescue and firefighting firefighters and two public works engineers. So just looking at FY 2020, proposed budget is a total of $24.8 million, and you can see the bulk of that is in the airport fund, about 91%. I'll also note here on the top right-hand corner, there's a page referring to the specific page in your budget document, if you wanted to follow along in that. Breaking out the fiscal year 2020 proposal by division, I'll just highlight a couple of higher percentage divisions here. The Admin Division at 31%. About half of that includes debt service across the department. The Facilities Maintenance Group at 20% is composed of supplies and services, staffing and utilities. And then the Certification and Operations Group at 21% includes about $2.6 million for the Fire Department firefighters that we hire. So moving into some of the key expenditure changes. In our Facilities Maintenance line item, we're proposing about a $323,000 increase. That has two major components. The first is just the rising cost of contracting for services like HVAC maintenance. The second is the airport is actually increasing just the size of its facilities. Five new light industrial buildings will be completed at 6100 Hollister. And then back in May of 2018, the airport assumed control of the 495 South Hangar Fairview facilities. So that was a 50-year ground lease that expired, and the airport assumed control of that building and the associated maintenance with that. That's about 160,000 square feet in hangar facilities, and will generate about $2.25 million on an annual basis in revenue for the airport. The airport also included some air service marketing dollars to help market some of our new air service routes, especially for Sacramento and Salt Lake City, up to $50,000 for each of those routes. That's included in the airport's air service development program. We're also proposing to include $50,000 to hire an airline lease agreement consultant. The airline agreements currently expire at the end of fiscal year 2020, and we'll be looking to negotiate a new three- to five-year lease agreement with the airlines. Some of those terms haven't been updated in a significant number of years, so hopefully they'll help us bring that up to benchmarking with other airline agreements at other airports. We're also proposing to add $40,000 for a signage consultant, and that's really to improve the look and feel of airport signage, especially in our commercial industrial area. We hope that will have some ancillary incremental revenue effects, especially for our building rents. Finally, we engaged in a terminal bond refunding this year. You'll see about a $270,000 decrease in our bond payments, starting in FY 2020 and going forward for the next 20 years. The one proposed staffing change that's included in your budget, and we'll talk about a couple other ones that we plan to bring back to council later in this presentation. We are proposing to add one property management specialist in the Business and Properties Management Division with a focus on tenant issues, permitting, and lease processing. This will allow some of the higher-level staff in that division to focus on business development and generating new revenues for the airport. Total cost for salaries and benefits is estimated at about $96,000. So I just wanted to take a moment to talk about where these changes kind of fit into the budget and also talk a little bit about some of our funds and how they break down. So the Airport Operating Fund here on the left-hand column, that's essentially the airport's general fund. It is where the bulk of our revenues are received and expenditures are made. Moving down towards the bottom, the Non-FAA Capital Fund is airport capital that's not funded by FAA Airport Improvement Program grants. The Development Fund was created in August 2016, when the airport sold about eight acres of property to direct relief. In turn, we took that revenue and constructed buildings at 6100 Hollister. Finally, the Tea Hangar Fund is used to pay debt service on 24 revenue-generating tea hangers. That was from a state loan to build those tea hangers. So just showing where some of these items kick in, about a $317,000 increase in salaries and benefits. That's due to just general increases in salaries and benefits and the new property management position. We're proposing about a $570,000 increase in supplies and services, and that's due to the increased facilities maintenance costs, air service marketing, and consultants for the airline lease agreements and signage. Finally, you see terminal bond savings here of about $270,000. Also highlight another big item here. It shows about a $580,000 reduction from budget in FY 19. That's really, this is our capital program, and the budget kind of carries forward as multi-year projects occur. And then finally, for the Development Fund, the construction at 6100 Hollister will be completed in fiscal year 2019, and then the debt service payments will begin in fiscal year 2020. So it shows about a $10.1 million decrease. So moving on to some of our other sub-funds, the Passenger Facility Charge Fund. The Passenger Facility Charge is a $4.50 per inplanement user fee assessed on each passenger boarding at the airport. This is used to repay a portion of the debt service on the terminal. FAA capital grants, the airport receives entitlement Airport Improvement Program grants each year. Finally, the Facility Charge Fund is a Customer Facility Charge, or CFC, that's assessed at a $10 per rental car contract, and that's used to repay the debt service on the rental car quick turnaround facility. So just to highlight a few big items, big changes here from budget. The FY 19 budget included a $3 million paydown of the terminal debt as part of the refunding. The airport typically doesn't receive its grants from the FAA until July or August of each year, so we would return to council to appropriate those funds after we received the grant award from the FAA. And finally, in the Customer Facility Charge, we're showing about a $500,000 decrease. The FY 2019 budget included an appropriated reserve amount of about $500,000. We're proposing to eliminate that for fiscal year 2020. So moving on to the revenue side, some of the key drivers in fiscal year 2020 are commercial industrial properties. We're projecting a stable level of occupancy. That's important for our revenues because most of our leases include a CPI or minimum 3% adjustment. We're also anticipating leasing of Building 114 that's been vacant since November of We talked a little bit about the 495--
Which one is that? 114?
That was the building formerly occupied by Teledyne Reisheim.
Oh, okay.
It's in our commercial industrial area.
On Fairview? No.
North of Hollister, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Then the General Aviation Group, we talked a little bit about the 495 South Fairview Hangar leases. This will be the first year that we receive the annualized $2.25 million in revenues from that facility. The CFC Fund has generated about $500,000-plus surpluses for the last number of years, to the point that we anticipate retiring that debt in fiscal year 2020 for the rental car QTA. Finally, we've had a lot of air service changes at the airport, a lot of new airlines, a lot of new routes. Those are important for airport revenues because the new airlines generate new terminal rental fees, landing fees, boarding bridge, fuel flowage fees. But they also bring passengers who pay for concessions like parking and rental cars and dine at the restaurant and purchase items at the gift shop. So we're anticipating about a 17.5% increase in passengers in fiscal year 2020. Just a brief chart of inplanements historically. An inplanement is a passenger boarding at the airport. There's also deplanements, which is passengers arriving. So together, those are passengers total passing through the airport. Fiscal year 2020, we're projecting to be the highest number of inplanements ever at the airport. So just looking similarly at the proposed revenues and some of the big changes and the drivers here, again, about a $357,000 change due to those rental increases in the Building 114 lease in our commercial industrial areas. General Aviation revenues increasing about $434,000 is that 495 South Fairview Hangar lease is annualized. About a $1 million increase due to the increase in passengers and purchasing those concessions for parking, et cetera. And then the commercial airlines, about a $575,000 increase from the new flights. Looking at the Development Fund, it shows about a $2.7 million decrease. And again, that's due to the one-time revenues associated with the construction going away, and the building lease is commencing in fiscal year 2020. And then moving over to the Passenger Facility Charges, about a $230,000 increase from those increased passenger numbers. The FAA grants, again, we won't receive until summer, so we wouldn't see any revenues from that in our proposed budget until we come back to council after that grant is awarded. And then in the CFC Fund, we're anticipating retiring the debt, so the CFC collections would cease at that point. So moving on to some cash flow projections and some items that we're proposing to return to council for at a later date. The first item is a capital project to install a new boarding bridge at Gate 3. This is actually out to bid right now. And what we're proposing to do is use about $1.1 million from our operating fund reserves this fiscal year to start purchasing that, to help alleviate some of our terminal capacity constraints at the terminal with all the new airlines and passengers. That would be reimbursed next fiscal year by our next round of FAA grant funding. We're also proposing to add a couple of staffing changes to the budget that are not included in the current budget document you have that we'd propose as part of the amendment process. The first is a new security operations supervisor to focus on security compliance. It's about a $135,000 increase in salaries and benefits. The second would be a change from an administrative analyst 2 to airport business service manager to really support business development and the financial management of the airport at about a $31,000 net increase in salaries and benefits. So kind of just looking at what all of these changes would do in terms of our year-end reserves. At fiscal year 2019 year-end, we would anticipate being about $600,000 below policy reserve levels. With the strong revenues budgeted in fiscal year 2020 and the reimbursement from the FAA grants, we'd be about $1.4 million above policy reserve levels, and then that number only grows over time. Just a quick look at some of our fund reserve balances at the end of fiscal year 2018. I'll highlight a couple here. The FAA Grants Fund has a negative reserve balance. It's awaiting some reimbursement from FAA grants. The Passenger Facility Charge used about $3 million as part of the terminal bond debt, paying down some of that debt early. In the Customer Facility Charge balance, they're $3 million. That's a big reason that we anticipate being able to repay the debt service on the QTA Moving on to some of our key initiatives and performance objectives, the Airport Capital Program, it's about a $1.7 million capital program proposed for next year. I'll just highlight a couple of these projects. The first is the Airline Terminal Apron Redesign at about $330,000. This would allow all the current aircraft that are serving the airport to use Gate 1. Not all of them can use that gate currently. Lessy building maintenance, about $400,000. This is to focus on some roofing and HVAC improvements at Building 226 in anticipation of a long-term lease there. And finally, the Northeast Pavement Phases 4 and 5, $200,000 is to fund the design of pavement rehab at the 495 South Fairview Hangar facilities. This would be the final components and have all of the apron rehabilitated at the 495 South Fairview hangars. Key performance objectives. With all of the passenger increases, the Administration Group is really going to focus on terminal capacity enhancements. The Business and Properties Group is going to be focusing on renegotiating those airline operating agreements. Again, new passengers. The Marketing Group will be focusing on filling all the seats that the airlines are adding by conducting some good marketing campaigns. Facilities Maintenance Group will be looking to improve Building 226 with some HVAC and roof improvements. The AOA Maintenance Group will be focusing on repainting the whole position markings on the primary runway. The Security Group will be reviewing and updating its patrol policy and procedures manual. A Certain Ops Group will be completing a rehabilitation of its security system. This is actually an AIP grant-funded project. And then our Facilities Planning Group will start drafting the environmental assessment for the Taxway Hotel Extension, which was a master plan project, and also begin preparing design and permitting for the airline lavatory pretreatment facility upgrade project. We presented our airport fiscal year 2020 operating fund budget to the Airport Commission on March 20th, and they recommended approval of the council. With that, we'll take any questions you might have.
Mr. Friedman has a question.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. I'm pretty sure I do. But in our agenda binder on page G18, it shows the projected 2019 capital program was 14.3 million, and then the proposed is 1.7 million, just rounding. That has to, again, do with the direct relief, correct? I just want to be sure that I'm understanding that.
Correct, yeah. The bulk of that is due to the $6100 development sale to direct relief.
And then on another question, it gets to, I guess it was slide 40, just addressing the marketing and services. One of the questions I have is currently, how is our space capacity meeting the needs of the airlines? I guess this also gets into installing the Boarding Bridge 3 and the improvements we want to make. So is the current capacity meeting the needs, or are we just at our point where we need to expand? And then what is looking five to 10 years ahead? What are we planning for in terms of new airline service, which was mentioned, so kind of current, and then five, 10 years from now?
So I would say if we were looking for a trigger that would direct us towards expansion, we have that trigger. And what we're trying to do now is we're trying to identify projects that we can take on that will help us enhance the existing capacity of the facility. And so that's doing things like adding the additional jet bridge, which was included in the original project for the terminal but pulled out due to cost constraints. We're going to expand the footprint of Gate Number 1 to allow it to accommodate larger aircraft. When the terminal was designed and built, it was designed with smaller general, or I'm sorry, smaller regional-type aircraft to come into the facility. We're now getting more mainline, larger-type aircraft that cannot fit into that gate. That will help us, you know, with our capacity. And then finally, we're working with the airlines to convert the proprietary gate check-in system to more of a common-use type system. What that will do is it will allow all of the airlines to use any of the gates, rather than be constrained by only the gate that has their proprietary equipment. So we hope that these initiatives will help us buy a little more time, but we will also begin the process of identifying what it's going to take to expand the terminal facility. And expansion was in mind when the terminal was designed and built. The master plan actually includes a placeholder for expansion on the north and the south side of that terminal facility. So we're very focused on trying to accommodate the needs of our existing airlines and those such as Delta that will be coming shortly, and then others that are also interested in Santa Barbara. So we have those triggers that, you know, are already right in front of us, and expansion is something we'll need to take a hard look at.
Thank you for that answer. It's very thorough, and it shows we're at a point now where we definitely need to be looking at the five, 10, 20-year timeframe. And I assume that the current expansion of airlines that we've had over the last year, year and a half, and some of the work that we're proposing now, would address the issue of leakage that was part of the presentation that came up. And have we, is there any preliminary results on some of these efforts with the new airlines on addressing the leakage that has been to LA and others? Do we know if it's working, or if there's any results, or is it too soon?
No, I would say it's absolutely working. We're projecting a 17.5% increase in passengers this next year. The airlines are adding additional service into the airport, and those flights are pretty much filled. So it says that we are on the minds of travelers today, and they are choosing to fly from Santa Barbara.
Well, thank you to you and all your staff for all the great work you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez, question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is your first budget workshop here at the city?
Yes, sir.
How's it going so far?
Good. We're getting through it.
How different or similar is this to what you went through in Louisiana or up in the Bay Area?
It's very similar to Shreveport, Louisiana. In fact, the only difference is they were on a different calendar year. So we actually started the budget process there back in June and went before council in December. And then I left there and came here and started the process that will go through June. So I've been working on budgets for the past year. So happy to get through it.
And it seems like you've landed, so to speak, at a good time in terms of our revenue increasing.
Absolutely.
What a miracle you've worked in a short few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a good time.
So the substantive questions I have are related to the staffing numbers. So authorized positions in our budget, looks like it's 61 in 2018, and we've heard there will be a new security position and a property management specialist? And was there one other one, or is it just these two?
The other one is basically a reclassification of an existing position that we have.
So it goes from 61 to 63, and then 64. So what is that other position? And I'm just looking at page G18 in our budget.
Yeah, so the two additional positions that are not included in your budget books will be for a security operations supervisor, and that's to deal with security compliance. We have some challenges in that area that we have to address, and we need some additional resources to focus the bulk of their time on ensuring that we're complying with security requirements. And then the other position is taking our existing analyst 2 position and upgrading that to more of a business services manager. So focusing on the financial side as well as getting us some additional support we need on the business development side. And with all the additional business that we've seen, both with commercial properties, the additional leases, and the additional airline service, we're spread pretty thin right now.
So who's the other person that I'm missing to go from 61 to 64?
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Yeah, maybe if I could try, and then airport staff can chime in as well. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. So you're looking from FY 18, it went from 61 to projected FY 19. That's the current fiscal year we're in. So in the budget that we've already approved, they were at a staffing level of 63. We can go back and look what those new positions were that were approved over a year ago, but that's where you get to 63. So to go from 63 to 64, it's the one property management specialist position that was submitted as part of their proposed budget. I'm recommending it. That's what you're seeing in the book. What didn't happen, and because of the management changes and miscommunication, they didn't submit those two additional requests in time for it to be included in the book. And so those are the ones that we highlighted, and I just want to be precise on those. That's the new security operations supervisor that we just mentioned, so that will take you from 64 to 65 eventually. And then the reclassification isn't a new position, that's an existing position. So a couple of those, it's a little confusing because a couple of those have come in late, but they're important enough that I've wanted to get them in. We'll bring them forward as kind of staff-recommended adjustments. We just wanted to be transparent with you now that we're going to be recommending those.
So as long, if I just cross out 64 and put in 65--
Correct.
--on page 18. So will that change the underlying numbers? Is it worth doing an update to our binders?
Again, we need to present it to you as a staff-recommended adjustment, and then the final budget will adjust and get all those trued up, yes.
Okay. And then regarding, I guess, the underlying goals, and I don't know, did you, is most of this stuff just a continuation, or did you have a chance to get in and do much reworking?
I've reviewed it all, and we've updated some of it, yes.
Okay, it hasn't been substantial? Okay, because I was just curious if, for example, those new positions ended up in the narrative? So with airport security on G38, if any of the mission statement program activities or the justification ended up in this text?
It did not.
Okay.
I believe we adjusted it. No. The security position is a recent addition. That's why we were late getting it in, you know, with some regulatory-- That's why we were late getting it in, you know, with some regulatory issues that came up that we're trying to address.
Okay. And I know security is the top priority at the airport, so
Yes.
I don't have any objection, but I would love to see, you know, that we reconcile our written descriptions with where we go, just so we're on the right page. And I guess the same thing with the property specialist that would go under the airport facilities maintenance page?
Business development.
Business development?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe that one is included in the text.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. I just first have a question and then some comments, but so with the adjustments to bigger gate to accommodate larger aircraft, I'm wondering two things. One, what that might do to noise conditions? I know you've heard and we've heard all, and you've explained it to me very well, so maybe this is an opportunity to discuss that as well. But with larger aircraft, does it change the landing pattern, or what that might do to noise conditions, and then what the timeline for that gate might be?
Sure. So when we speak of larger aircraft, it's the aircraft that are currently coming into the airport. So it's the 737 type aircraft that are coming in every single day now. The problem is they can only fit on certain gates until we, you know, get the third jet bridge and modify gate one. So they're already coming into the airport.
I see. Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to have a comment.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, and just clarify, just so everyone understands, that people at home understand, so when we talk about modifying gate one, we're talking about on the exterior of the building to accommodate the planes as they approach the building, not any physical expansion of that side of the interior.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to say thank you for the new services. I know I fly back and forth to Denver frequently, and this last weekend was the first time I got to fly just directly out of Santa Barbara, which saved me about 10 hours of back and forth driving, which has just been phenomenal. And my husband flies in and out of Sacramento, and now he gets to use the new flight. And so you have personally granted our family tens of hours of time a month, so thank you. And it was not expensive, which was really remarkable. And it looked so nice inside. It was really, it's a really excellent airport, and just thank you.
Thank you. And it's great to get that kind of feedback that we're providing a good service for the community, so.
Well, there's no other questions, Mr. Thompson. Very good news today.
Yes.
Thank you. You're starting us off with good news, right, Mr. Casey? So thank you to you and your staff. We'll move on to which division?
Solid Waste will be next.
Solid Waste next, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am Bob Semario, Finance Director. And I just wanted to note that this is just one piece of the Finance Department as a whole. Environmental Services is one of six divisions, so we're going to start with this. On May 15th, we'll present the rest of the department to you, the other five divisions. Environmental Services is uniquely located within the Finance Department. They do very unique things and great things. And Ms. Renee Arley is a Division Manager, and she'll be doing the actual presentation. And I'll be here, of course, for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I am Renee Arley, Environmental Services Manager. And today we are going to go over several elements, including system drivers behind the services and programs that we provide, some division service and programs highlights from this current fiscal year, our proposed budget overview, and then our key performance objectives. So under drivers, obviously garbage and recycling services are primarily initiated for public health. We also manage the system for rate and revenue stability. And then a large driver for us in the past and going forward has been around state regulations. And for the last several years, we've had three main drivers, AB 939, which has been in existence for 20 years, AB 341, which I'll talk a little bit more in a minute, and AB 1826. But just in the last year, we've had three new pieces of legislation come on board, and there are several, the last one being SB 54 and AB 1080 as an example of proposed legislation. And part of the point is that we are definitely in a phase where we're seeing much more direction from the state in how we are managing our programs. And then addition, one more locally is with new system infrastructure and how that alters our future system, in particular the Tahegus Resource Recovery Project, which is under the new name of the Resource Center, and I will be providing a little bit more information in just a minute on that. And then the global recycling market and how that is changing both the commodity values and then also what we collect at the curb. So as part of our division and our organization, we have a budget this year proposed of approximately $28 million. That is divided up, the lion's share of almost $25 million under service delivery, and that entails our contracts that we have with our haulers and for disposal. The remaining of that amount of the budget is for internal services and programs that we oversee with our existing staff of nine people, a little over eight FTEs. So under program highlights, I'm going to start first with our new system infrastructure. And again, this is the TRRP, the Tahegus Landfill, now known as the Resource Center. I'm going to continue to reiterate that as we can incorporate the new nomenclature. So historically, as you can see, that we've had a very successful and mature pro curbside program. The good thing about that is that our residents and businesses know what they're doing, and they're performing well, and we continue to be below our state targets in terms of per capital disposal. The challenge, hence the Resource Center, is that we have been steady for many years and needed to make a change in how we were meeting our state and local goals. This is a map of our current facilities and their locations. So obviously, there's the Tahegus Landfill, the South Coast Transfer Station, where much of our garbage and our recyclables go to then be transferred, and for garbage going to Tahegus, for recyclables headed down to Ventura to Gulf, the Gold Coast Recycling Center. Marburg also operates a downtown recycling center for drop-offs. And Marburg has been operating the Galita Recycling Center, which is located at the airport, to process our commercial recyclables. In addition, we have a contract with Agromon to process our food scraps program, and they take material both to the Simi Valley location, where it is processed and then ultimately sent to Synagro for final composting. As we move into the new system over, in 2021, as currently anticipated, several facilities will go away, namely the recycling that's happening at the airport that Marburg's been handling, and then also the Gold Coast Recycling Center. All of that will be refocused at the Resource Center, where we'll have the Materials Recovery Facility, and then also the anaerobic digester. Just as a way, as a quick update on that system, as you know, we are 40% of the total, both in terms of revenue and materials that's being delivered there to the Resource Center. It's overall $134 million investment, and I'll talk more about its impact on the rates when we get later into the budget in a few minutes. Construction is underway. It began in December, and we are still on target to meet the schedule of an opening in early 2021. The Murph, the Materials Recovery Facility area has been graded. They have some several walls that have been erected already, and for the anaerobic digester or the AD facility, that area has been graded as well. Our Murph equipment is ordered and it's being manufactured, and so far, for six months, no cost overrun, so that's good news. There's more information on the county's website. They do have actually like live and video footage so that everyone can, in the community, can keep track of the project, and that's the lessismore.org website. So another big driver and focus for our team this year has been around the recycling market changes. So as you have all like heard by now, over the last year and a half, in late 2017, China essentially closed their ports to recyclable materials by having a contamination rate of 0.5% for materials. China has taken the bulk of the world's scrap really for the last 20 years, ever since they had entered the World Trade Organization in 2001. And it was a very economical way for most of the world to handle that material, certainly less expensive than trying to process it here in the United States. But now they produce much of their own virgin plastic, and they have their own scrap, and real concern about their own environmental quality and image. And so that was part of the impetus to closing their system. Over the last year, we've seen a shift of those, the attempt to go to other markets in particular Asia, including Thailand, Malaysia, and India. We have since seen most of those markets, actually, all three of those markets have closed as well. So it's a real shift in the thinking about how we handle our materials and our commodities and the level of responsibility for them. To, the good news is that we locally do still have markets for our primary materials. So our paper is going to Vietnam, and our other commodities are being handled within domestic markets here in North America. The one caveat to that is plastics. So plastics 3.7, 3 through 7, so there's the squishy plastics like for food containers and yogurt cups and things like that. There is really no market for them anymore, and we don't see them opening up anytime soon. Because of that, we've been working with the county and Marburg to realign our marketing for our program to make it more consistent with what we can really sell as a commodity. So to that end, we will be simplifying the system and removing those plastics as recyclables from our list in particular. Again, the good news is that's less than 1% of the total amount of material that we collect, so it doesn't impact diversion, and it actually helps us keep the commodities that are of value from being contaminated and so finding consistent markets.
Is a question?
Yes.
Ms. Arley?
Yes, Madam Mayor, yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is it enough that it would affect the estimated lifetime of the landfill? I mean, we based that number based on diversion away from the landfill. What is it? I mean, maybe just a long-term question in terms of how much now will go into the landfill, and does that shorten the amount of time that we're projecting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon. Again, the, I guess, the good news of the no market for those types of recyclables, those plastics, is that they take up such, they're such a small amount. They really are like less than 1% of what we collect. The bulk of what we collect is actually over 60% is paper, for example. Another 20% is glass. And so there are strong markets for that. All of that will continue to be diverted, so it really doesn't impact the life of the landfill.
Thank you.
So around local and state legislature, I just wanted to highlight a few things. Obviously, we had passed our expanded polystyrene ordinance that went into effect in January 1st. The implementation is going very well. All right, outreach team has continued to work with the businesses, both food service providers and stores around town. And we are monitoring and following up on public complaints, but thankfully, there've been relatively few so far, so that's really good news. We had three 90-day exemptions, asking for a little bit of time to be able to draw down their existing EPS inventory, but all of those facilities are now operating in compliance. In addition, we are gearing up to implement our local straw ban that we passed this past year as well. It is, it's slated to start January, I'm sorry, July 1st. So we are actually, this month, May through June, are going to be doing enhanced outreach to all of the businesses as we get ready to roll out for this new ordinance as well. And then around ongoing diversion, as I said in the introduction, AB 341, which is state legislation that mandates mandatory recycling at businesses and also apartment buildings with five or more units. We've been working on implementing this legislation since 2013, and of the 460 businesses we have in the city, there are about 949 of them are subject to this legislation. And the great news is that they are all essentially in compliance, and like I said, like our team continues to work with the remainder, remaining ones to get them into compliance. On the organic side, that's legislated by AB 1826, we've been working on implementing this legislation for mandatory organics since 2016. The goal is to have 50% diversion by 2020. And again, we're making very good progress, and I have to say, like, overall, the businesses are really, really receptive to making the changes at their facilities. Although, again, we definitely offer a high caliber level of outreach service to all of them to make it as easy as possible. And for both of these programs, CalRecycle, which is our regulatory agency, uses them as a model in how we put together our outreach and work with the businesses in terms of the compliance. And so I think it's a really, you know, stellar program that we should all be proud of.
Mr. Dominguez has a question.
So, yes, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I can't read the small print. It's too small on these printouts. If you can go back one slide, slide 18. What are the colors down there on the bottom, and what do they signify?
So there is, so the blue is non-compliant right now.
That's the 504 number?
Yes, that's a 54. So that's the 53%. And the compliant is the 430. And then there's also a tiny little sliver, which is probably difficult to see on the, up on the screen, where is also compliant, so.
And why is that a different color?
It's a different color because we also, there's a means to have a waiver for compliance. It's a technicality, not worth mentioning, but.
And then the 949 number, what is that?
Those are the number of businesses in the city that are subject to the regulations.
And what do those include?
So those would include, it is based on your solid waste generation. So if a business is generating more than four cubic yards of solid waste per week, they are subject to the state legislation.
And the slide before that, the recycled diversion, the green there, that's also compliance, and the blue is?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, the 896 is the compliant.
And what is it they're compliant in?
They are compliant in having adequate service. So we're, and right now, and at least 50% diversion.
So meaning of these 949, 896 send more than? So meaning of these 949, 896 send more than 50% of the material to recycling?
In terms, yes, in terms of their service levels, yes.
And that's just the volume?
That's the volume. Yes, it's volumetric, yes.
Okay. And that includes, and then the organics is not included in that calculation? That's a separate percentage?
That's a separate, yes.
So they may have a bin that's trash, a bin that's recycling, and a bin that's organic? As long as the recycling bin is bigger than the trash bin, they're compliant with the recycled diversion, even if they're not full?
The way, yes, the way that we have the ability to measure now, that's true. Part of what our team does is to right-size the service as much as possible so that, because again, even though the recycling and the food waste services are less expensive, they still have a cost associated with them. So we're also always looking to right-size the service levels.
And for the organics diversion, what is the, what do they have to do to be compliant?
They're looking to have 50% of the organics that would be in their garbage being diverted into the yellow carts or bins. If they're four or yards bigger service level per week.
And so how do we track that?
We have a billing system that delineates out all of the service levels by type, by trash, recycling, or green waste or organics, and what those sizes are and how many times a week they're being serviced.
And so how do we know they're not just dumping organics into the garbage?
We, a part of the outreach team's role is to also conduct waste assessments and audits on all the businesses. And so we do periodic dumpster diving on them.
How often does that occur?
It depends on, it can be both customer complaint and it is also randomly generated. So our team has goals for that every week. We're looking at numerous businesses, somewhere between 10 and 20. And then they're also doing spot checks when they're out, just conducting general outreach. And then the other component is that the drivers from Marburg are also checking bins before they dump them. And we have what's called a red tag program. And if they find recyclables or food waste or green waste that is contaminated with garbage, it is then red-tagged and it's collected as garbage and they're charged as such, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is a little focus on city facilities and leading by example. So we had set as one of our P3s that we would have all of the city facilities at the same goals that we have set for our commercial businesses in the city. This isn't just to lead by example, though that's an important role as a public entity, but we are also subject to the same regulatory requirements as the businesses in our community. We also have the distinction of having 42 facilities. So we are really one of the largest generators by far in the city itself. So using as a baseline from last year of 45% diversion, the same outreach team has been working with the facilities, going through one by one. We're about halfway through all of them. And so it's the same idea where we're providing education, we are evaluating their carts and bins, making sure that the services are right-sized at each of the facilities, and then also switching as needed to more recyclables and food waste carts or bins at the facilities. And this is just a collection, this is some Public Works staff and they're very enthusiastic. So, but since, just since January, we've added Public Works, gone through Fleet Management and all eight of the fire stations to our food scraps program. So that's rolling out quite well. And we actually have 17 facilities in compliance with AB 1826, out of the 31 who will be in the, within the next year, by the end of fiscal year 2020. And we've also certified two city facilities so far as green business. And that includes the Granada Garage and all of the operations that are located there and waterfront administration. And then clean, Clean SB. This is the suite of our community programs. So I'll go through these quickly, starting with homeless encampments. These are some photos from Garden. As you know, in last fiscal year, we took over coordinating with police and Caltrans and administering the contractor for cleanups around interstate exchanges and on the street. We've conducted jointly in this group effort, 68 cleanups since July 2017. Initially, our budget of last year and this year was for $20,000 per year. Due to some of the enhanced work that we're doing, we are recommending increasing that budget overall to $70,000 a year. That also includes $20,000 to help administer the contractor to assist with cleanups in the parks as well. And this is just a map showing the distribution of those cleanups around the city. And whether it's primarily, they've been primarily on City of Santa Barbara, Caltrans, Union Pacific, or county land. Although, again, like we have been the coordinating effort, the city has, meaning particularly the police and staff from Environmental Services in scheduling these. Regarding abandoned waste and bulky items, this illegal dumping continues to be a large issue in the neighborhood. Last year, we added information, I'm sorry, we added budget to conduct additional targeted services and pilots with Marburg. And as in summary, we installed 130 no-dumping signs in the hotspot areas for illegal dumping. Last year and this year, we have been continuing to pilot the use of a roving truck. And this, we have one, a pilot that is going on right now. It started in April, be going through June. And we run it at the beginning and the end of every month, in particular in heavy rotation. And this helps us just continually pick up illegal dumping in the hotspot areas as opposed to having to wait for it to be called in and then send the truck.
Ms. Ierle, I'm going to interrupt you. Mr. Dominguez had a question, maybe on the last slide? Or go ahead, Mr. Dominguez, what's your question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to the homeless encampment cleanup, the, one, I appreciate all the efforts you're doing. This was great that your department stepped up and added this to your workload. The, and the budgetary increase from 20 to $70,000, that's great. What is the, what are the new goals? Is there something in the budget that we can look to? And the reason I ask is driving around certain parts of the city, there's just increased trash and not the bulky item stuff, but there'll be, you know, a torn-up sleeping bag with food waste. I mean, it's just really looking junky in parts of the city. It's not Santa Barbara standard. And how do we engage your department to really comprehensively deal with that stuff? Because I don't think anyone else is dealing with it. Either neighboring businesses might pick it up, or if someone stops and actually calls something in, maybe it gets picked up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. Yes, actually, part of that increase is to, is to address some of the more, one, chronic areas where we know that encampments occur regularly so that we have the ability to essentially put them on a more regular schedule since we have a much better sense of how often and how quickly they get repopulated. That funding also allows us to have a small contract with a service provider to address things more like litter or just small, very small, potentially encampment areas that might just be a couple of sleeping bags or some scattered debris that is too small to call out the contractor for an encampment cleanup and also something that Marburg would not handle as well. So we are looking to have some more flexibility and tools in place to be able to respond.
So that's a new contract you're working on that's not in place yet?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And so would that be something that could even go up to a daily sweep of the problematic areas where there's daily trash being deposited? Like what are the parameters or what is your goal as you're negotiating this contract?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the way we are envisioning that contract right now is that for the litter areas, it would still be either complaint-based or knowing that, again, we have much better information now than we did a couple, two years ago of certain problematic areas that we could have on regular cleanings, whether that's once a week or once a month, depending on what it looks like. And also being like budget-driven at this point. If there was something that's larger and more comprehensive that would require equipment, then that would be something we would need to speak with, like for streets and traffic, for example.
I was actually thinking smaller, that you didn't need equipment, but it was just a daily, like under the bridge at Milpis and Casique, there's trash left there on a daily basis. And that's the gateway to our beautiful city by tens of thousands of people. And so that, I would love to see someone coming by daily, or at least until the problem resolved itself, and picking up garbage bags, food waste.
Mr. Dominguez, are you sending emails to Mr. Dewey? I usually send them to him. I don't know, maybe they end up with Environmental Services. But if you see hotspots where you are, by all means, call them in.
So I just want to know kind of programmatically, what's the goal of the department? Because if that's something that you want us to bring to you as council or want us to give you input on, obviously now is the time. And if that would cost an extra $70,000 to give our city, facelift isn't the right word, but a cleanup that is meritorious for Santa Barbara, I think that's something we should talk about now and decide.
Mr. Casey?
If it's going to cost $10 million and maybe we don't do it, but.
Go ahead, what are your thoughts?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, this is staff's response to, we agree that we are seeing more litter than we would like to see. We gave a very thorough presentation last week and mentioned this kind of stepped-up effort as well. And so we're taking our annual budget from $20,000 to $70,000, which we think is a meaningful increase. We haven't started providing that service yet, or we're not out in the field yet. So it's hard to say as to whether it's the right amount of money or not. Based upon our analysis and working with our partners and the additional resources we're putting out in the field, we think this is a good start. You as council could direct us to start with a different number and see how it goes. Or we could start with this number, evaluate it and return and see how effective it is.
Well, and the number to me is less meaningful because I don't know what that buys us. I want to know what you're buying and let you figure out the number and bring to us reasonable strategies. I'm not interested in all that micromanaging the department. I just want to know kind of like, when you're picking your goal and how you achieve it, do you want council to weigh in on the policy goal? Because to me, the policy goal is let's clean up Santa Barbara, even if in the short term it means more daily or weekly trips. And again, if that's what my colleagues agree on as a suitable policy goal, I'm totally wanting you guys to figure out how to make that happen and figure out the most reasonable price for it. So that's why it's hard for me to pick a number. I don't know what 150 gets us or 200,000. I just want to know what it would cost to solve this problem.
Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in?
Yes, please.
So one of the considerations we had to kind of factor into this is that we're, we didn't notice any additional amount of money for this and the rate. So, you know, all the rates that we're proposing for next year are already going to be about 16%. This kind of was a late decision. They said we can augment some of the dollars we have now. We thought $50,000 was small enough that we didn't have to make any adjustments to the rates. But as Mr. Case indicated, it's just for us to see, this is a dollar limit, dollar amount of money that's going to help us get started and evaluate what the need is. We have no idea what the need is at this point, but we'll go out there and we may come back to mid-year next year and say, hey, this is really doing, going well, or it's not. But we can adjust at that point to either ask more dollars or say we're doing great with the dollars we have. But we have to consider the fact that this is really unfunded in terms of how we're going to pay for it because we didn't build it into the rates. It's small enough that it's probably going to be fine, but anything more substantial, I would be concerned about our ability to pay for it unless we proposed higher rates and we'd have to go through a whole new process for that.
Well, and how would it look, or how would it work if we use general funds to supplement some of the cleanup?
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think that's council's decision to make. You can certainly do that within your authority.
You mean, use our reserves, not a general fund?
No, just general fund money.
Okay.
If, for example, you were to say, we don't have it in the rate structure now, but another $30,000 would be the difference between, you know, a daily cleanup in a hotspot? Because again, this is all under the broken window theory. If people are littering and they don't think anyone's cleaning up, they keep littering and that's when you end up with the real problems. And we've seen it as a chronic problem. This isn't just, you know, a one-off, once a month type of thing. There are areas that are becoming trash depositories.
Okay, well, the next slide was talking about roving. Is that, was this addressing that or was that hotspots related to homeless encampments? Oh, yeah. Okay, so, no, that was illegal dumping.
That's correct. This is actually for abandoned waste and bulky items. But again, I.
Not so much litter?
Not, well, not explicitly, but they are linked. I mean, litter and homeless encampments and illegal dumping, we see overlays. And so between the pilots that we're running with Marburg for the bigger items, the enhanced services for encampment cleanups, the addition of doing more regular litter pickup in small, you know, like chronically difficult areas, collectively, it starts to look like a program. And again, it is still evolving because we're still gathering data and determining, you know, that, what that level of effort is needed. But we are getting better information, the more that we're out in the field and able to actually, you know, map and see how often and where these problems are occurring.
Okay. So we can, you're saying come back with a report, maybe we'll go with 50,000 for now?
Madam Mayor, that's our recommendation. I don't know exactly what the dollar amount is. And so we think going from 20 to $70,000 is a meaningful step up.
Okay.
And see how effective it is. It's something we're clearly interested in as well. It's why we're recommending it as staff and we see it as a problem and we want to try to address it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Friedman, your turn.
I would just like to appreciate my colleague raising this issue. I think it's, there's hotspots all around the city. I would say, I, at this point, I would agree with the staff recommendation, going from 20 to 70 is a big step. And keep in mind that we had an item on this issue last week where we discussed a lot of strategies that were, that are taking place. I seem to recall that Jim Dewey worked with a number of agencies to go out and he secured, it was $83,000 per year from UP. We also have the ability to go on to Caltrans and UP areas now have had a coordinated effort so we can address those more timely. So there are major steps we're taking. And to look at this one piece of it, I think is premature in light of the new resources we have. I'd also like to add that the trash is actually a symptom of a larger problem and that has to do with our homeless population that are on the streets and the need for housing, supportive services. And that big discussion that we had as a four-hour item last week, if we addressed those, those are the root causes and the trash is a symptom of those. And Councilmember Dominguez really wanted to push forward with housing as the option. So again, that's where we should be focusing our resources in addition to these. And I would also say the HEAP grant, which is another $2 million that is just implemented, is also going to help address this issue as well. Today, as a matter of fact, I had to drop off my car at the mechanic and I was walking back and I saw two of the AmeriCorps workers with one of homeless individuals that I know personally. And they were talking with him. He's one of the most service-resistant and they were both there. And so I talked with all three of them, but there was two there, it was on Upper State, and they were talking to him. And that's how we're really going to affect the change. So I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation. If it doesn't work, as, we always have the ability to bring it back in mid-year, especially if it's not a significant amount, like 10 million, but in the 30,000 range or something, whatever it is. not a significant amount like 10 million, but in the 30,000 range or something, whatever it is. We can always bring that back mid-year to look at it. But let's, let's give our staff a chance to see what they can do.
Let's continue with the presentation. There's time for questions and comments later. Thank you.
Yes. So just really quickly, we continue to collect data on both the abandoned waste and bulky items programs and, you know, looking at whether illegal dumping is increasing or decreasing. And as you can see, at least over the last two years, we're seeing both reduction in the number of items dumped, which is the, the blue line on the graph in front of you, and also an increase in the use of the bulky items program. So we've been, have been doing enhanced outreach around both of those efforts. So we do think that it's starting to, to, to pay off. This is just a sample of one of the signs that we've put in on the hotspot areas and that is the Marburg's roving truck. And as you can see, there's quite a number of mattresses and couches, usually the two biggest items that were down on the street. And finally, this is a, a map to show you how the program is being used over this year. The yellow dots are bulky item collection, pick, collections. The blue teardrops are illegal dumping signs that have been placed in hotspot areas. And then the green dots are fiscal year 19 illegal dumping pickups. And you can see that we have a definitely concentrated area of where we're finding and also have called in illegal dumping. It correlates quite a bit to where we have higher density and apartment, apartment buildings. So one of the pilots that I didn't mention earlier that we were working with, with Marburg is having them do direct outreach to, to 80 apartment buildings in the hotspot areas to schedule, so they will notice all of their residents and have scheduled pickups at those areas. So that's going to be one of our more enhanced outreach efforts and see how effective that is this year. And then moving on to public containers, we have 1,600 of them here in the city with a master plan to repair and replace them. This year, we are on a target to have 425 cans refurbished. We also did a focused effort on State Street. So by the end of the fiscal year, all of the cans from waterfront up through the 1,200 block will either be new and replaced or refurbished and with enhanced and sturdier lids. And then one of our feel-good efforts that we love to do every year is our Spirit of Service Awards. We've been having this for the last 15 years is to recognize those in the community going above and beyond to help us reach our reduction and clean SB goals. Approximately 92 awards have been given out since the program's inception. And just a one note is the, the photo on the right of the middle young man is Jack Canton. And we established a Jack Canton Youth Award last year. He had won award, he award in 2017 as, for his work informing a group called Teens on the Scene, which coordinates students across now multiple schools in the city to do cleanups as part of their volunteer work. And he was tragically died in the mud flows. And so it's, it's, it's been actually a really great, small thing to do to be able to, to honor him ongoing through the program. And then one new program also that we started this year is giving compost away at our community garden. So this compost that is produced by Agarman through our food waste. And we are in partnership with Parks and Rec to donate 50 bags of compost at one community garden each month. So we just started this in December. And now on to our budget. Again, for expenditures for this coming fiscal year 2020, they'll be in the neighborhood of $28 million. The lion's share of that 88% is for hauler services. That includes collection and disposal. As you can see in the, the first line in the budget under is hauler services. And so the majority of that is for rate increases, which I will cover in more detail in a few minutes. But that essentially is for the new infrastructure at the Tahiguis landfill and then another small percentage for an increase for Marburg as well. Around revenue, again, 28.6 million. And the majority of that is for reimbursement to, for our collection and the disposal and processing. The first line under solid waste fees, you can see that that's also projected to increase by $3 million. Again, to cover the added expenditures for hauling and processing. Line three with the program's support fee, this is the revenue that covers our staff programs and services. That increase of, of 927,000, the majority of that is actually the, what will be going into our reserves because part of the, the rate increase this year is to rebuild, to rebuild our reserves that we used for the Tahiguis project. And again, I'll go into more detail for that in the rates structure. And then expanded service fees, that change from 50,000 to 108,000 is the increase for the homeless encampment and litter cleanup. So around our upcoming proposed rates, as we build these every year and especially this year, they're driven by additional funds to cover costs in three primary areas. One is compensation for Marburg that is in our contract with them, that is based on CPI. Others also the increase in the county tipping fees per our materials delivery, or delivery agreement. And then related to that project, we, in fiscal year 18, used reserves to, to pay part of the increase in tipping fees. And we are now going to work over the next two years to rebuild those reserves. In addition, we have instituted the first phase of solid waste restructure. We've brought this forward to the Finance Committee several times over the last year. It's, it really have, we have four overlying goals in that. It upgrades and simplifies our current rate structure for all of our customer classes, single-family apartments and business. And it's intended to ensure that rates are charged to each customer class to recover the cost of service attributed to that class. Also looking for revenue predictability, the proposed rate structure establishes a system to calculate a base rate for fixed costs in the operating system and a variable cost for container size. And this, again, is a first in several steps to apply a consistent cross, costs across all customers. Thirdly is for alignment with state legislation. As I mentioned earlier, M AB 341 and AB 826 categorizes small apartment buildings with four or fewer as a single family and five or more as, as basically a large business, a large apartment. And this proposed sector redesign aligns the city and state classic, both with state classifications and it increases our ability to demonstrate compliance to the state as well. And then finally, for integrating into the utility billing system, the system is slated for an, an upgrade starting just in the next couple of months. And simplifying the solid waste structure enables changes to be billed without extensive custom programming, which we have to engage in right now and it, it's quite labor intensive. So this will improve calculation times and ease customer service questions. As part of this rate restructure, we had, we have 119 customers that we described as highly impacted, meaning that in relation to also the 16.3% overall rate increase, they were, they will be seeing an additional change as well, somewhere in, in the neighborhood of 25 to 30%. So we are, in addition to the Proposition 218 noticing, which is going, has gone out to all, all customers, we have done additional outreach to these 119 customers as well, meaning that they have all received a phone call or a visit from our business outreach team already, explaining to them the rate restructure and how it might be affecting them. And then also looking at their, their current service levels and how they might be able to adjust to, to minimize those rate increases. So around the revenue requirements for the solid waste system. And as I mentioned, that we have an annual CPI adjustment for collection per the contract. This year, that comes in at 2.26, 2%. We do small adjustments every year for public containers and our abandoned waste programs as well. And then as part of a two-year strategy to rebuild our reserves, we built in a 2.4% increase as well. That translates to about $668,000 this year. And then the bulk of the increase is as part of the Tahiguis project, the Resource Center. And that is 11.6% to meet the, the need for what we will be billed as a $150 per ton tipping fee as part of that project. So overall, it's a 16.3% increase. As I said, the letters to all of the, the bill holders went out on April 24th. We will be having our hearing on Tuesday, June 11th and providing adoption, these will go effect on July 1st. The rate schedules are available online at Santa Barbara, or ca.gov, utility billing. And also there is a, a bill calculator. So any bill holder can go in and put in their account number and it will show them how their bill will change. And then if they want to make additional changes to their services, how it then alters it. So it's a really handy tool for all of the, the customers to be able to take a personal look at their bills. And then to really quickly, our key performance objectives, as I was going over our highlights for this year, they all reflect what continue to be our, our 2020 priorities. And that's to achieve and maintain 75% waste at all city facilities, waste diversion, increase the number of scheduled pickup items to decrease the legal dumping and get 100% of all the regulated facilities into recycling and organics diversion programs by the end of the fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a quick comment about auditing and whatnot. I know that the Marburg drivers are in fact very vigilant in what is and wasn't in proper containers. Sometimes it's a little too vigilant for my taste, but it, but they are on top of it, so. To the recycling and the plastics and the, and the revenues for that, I noticed on page, or I think it's slide 38, we just have a plug number of 80,000 for the Marburg recycling revenue. Is that, and I realize how volatile and how bizarre the market is and frankly, that's kind of what it's always felt to me anyway. Are we responsible as ratepayers or to Marburg for those, the further fluctuation in the market itself in terms of recovering revenues from recycling? Or are there revenues that we had anymore? Is that, I mean, we have 80,000 plugged in and you said there are some domestic markets for plastics? Or is that strictly the cardboard we're shipping off of? What, how are we handling all that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse. That revenue, you're, you're right. It is part of an agreement between the city and Marburg for revenue sharing when materials had, had a value. And as that has gone away, we have eliminated that from, from our, our budget. However, the existing processing, collection and processing is covered by the, the rates that we have set and established.
So there's no revenue neutrality? In other words, if we go below that, we don't have to reassess or reexamine rates based on the lack of a recycling, recycling income?
So that, that's correct right now. And when we move into, as we move into the, the new agreement with the county, once the Resource Center is open, those recyclable revenues are incorporated in, in part of the overall calculation for, for the operation of that facility.
And as I understood your presentation, as far as the, once we get the MRF established up in Tahiguis, the less than 1% will end up being landfilled of the recyclers to be, to be, would take out and separate now? Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and actually, starting this summer, we will be marketing to have, have our customers go ahead and put them in, in the brown bins.
Okay. Last question. I, unless you presented, I didn't see it. Are we still considering a domestic food program, food scraps program? What program or is that, is that? At one point, we talked about doing the combined green waste, but that, there's problems with that as well, as I recognize.
Right, right now, we, we're not contemplating that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
So you mentioned that the, the facility, the MRF will open in early 2021?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct. Yes.
So has there been any change in the estimate of how long the expansion will, what the estimate of the expansion of the landfill facility is?
No, I've not seen any reevaluation of that.
So at this point, it's just the same as what was presented the last time the county made a presentation?
That's correct. The last time they were, last fall, that's correct.
Okay. And the early 2021, that was the estimate that they had presented last fall?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The, I have a question about the food scraps. Is food scraps synonymous with organics?
That's a good question. Yes, for, it is both then.
And I'll tell you the context in which I'm asking.
So green waste, the broad definition for organics is green waste and food scraps. Generally, how we use that terminology here in the city is that for organics is food scraps only. We refer to green waste as green waste.
So the, the goal on G 158, tons of food scraps diverted from Tahiguis. So it's in 2018, it was 3,100. And then we're moving up to 3,300 for 2019 and then it stays constant for 2020. And yet only half of our businesses, subject to regulation, are compliant. So it seems like there's a lot of room for growth if only half of our businesses are compliant.
One of the, the, the smart, I think, things that this program has done over the last few years is that we went after the, the bigger generators first. So that's why we've been able to, to see that, that actually, you know, quite excellent number of, of, you know, 3,300 tons and, and maintain that. So most of the currently out of compliant businesses that we have may be generating overall the, the threshold for solid waste in total, but are very, are smaller generators of organic slash food scraps. So, so I think holding that number, at least for the next year or two, makes sense. So it, it's going to be a, a much like smaller incremental growth.
So these, you're talking about like industrial food processors versus a mom and shop, open a few days a week restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense then. But then even from 2019 to 2020, you don't see any room for growth from 3,300 tons of food scraps?
Again, I, I think it would, it will probably be fairly nominal, but I'm, I would like to be always proven wrong. So I think if, if we came back with this fiscal year and, and, and a fiscal year and we, we saw a, a significant difference, then, then we would adjust that number.
And is it, is there some phenomena here where it's counterproductive to really put the screws to folks who aren't complying? Like is it just not waste worth the regulation or your staff time? Because it seems like with 50%. Because it seems like with 50 percent not complying, and you're only talking about picking up 120 tons with 500 businesses, it seems like that's 200 pounds of food? Am I doing the math right?
It's true. It does be, it does be, it does become a, a smaller amount. Overall, the, the team, the outreach team is still working with all these businesses across the board, so it's, it's not as though it's, it's a, a one-off. There's a whole suite of, of issues that they're dealing with, with them, including the recyclables, the ongoing potential contamination, the upcoming change in what is and isn't recyclable, the ordinances that are, that are being rolled out. So there's multiple touchpoints with them, which also includes the, the organics. So I'd say that the effort overall isn't wasted because that, again, they're providing a whole source of, of information and support to those businesses. And we do still have a responsibility to, to show to the state, we are audited every year, that we are making a good faith effort in our, in our programming.
So basically, if, if two years from now, with the next budget, we're still at 50 percent, that's okay?
Currently, the way the legislation is, is written, that is okay. In it, in addition, we should be seeing the Resource Center coming online, I mean, within, like, 2021, and if that is also the case, that helps establish our, again, like, our good faith effort to, to the state as well, so. And it, and it takes some of that burden off of the, the business themselves to, to be source separating.
Because the new machine will separate it for us?
Yes.
Okay. And I was just comparing that to our program measure for tons of mixed recyclables diverted from Tahiguis, which goes, it's at 20,000, and it's going to stay the same. Our goal is the same, or your goal is the same, from 2019 to 2020, even though we're going to lose the plastics numbers three to seven. So even though we're going to be able to divert less recyclables, that number stays the same?
Again, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, for, for the, those plastics, they are, they are so light and such a, a small percentage in, in terms of weight, that they will not create a, a difference in the diversion numbers overall.
Okay. The, let's see.
We have other lights on if we can come back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Friedman?
Just to follow up on, on the, the TRRP project and organics and green waste, so when that gets online, it, it'll be source separated there, so will actually, those numbers should increase due to the TRRP project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. Yes, so, so once the, the Resource Center at Tahiguis is up and running, we'll be delivering both source separated to what's collected at the curb, and also the garbage to that facility. And the garbage, the trash will be run over recyclables line, and organics and additional recyclables will be picked from those. So yes, the, the numbers will increase.
Great. And then going to slide 41, it's the rate increases for, for the budget. So this year, it explains what the, the 16 percent is, and for, for a large part of that is because the, we went to bonding, as I understand, we went to pay for the project this year. And so going forward in fiscal year 21, we are doing a two-year budget. Do we know or project what the increase would be for year two of this budget? It's not going to be 16 percent again, is what I'm trying to, to get at.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. That, that's correct. So the, we are right now projecting the, the total revenue rate increase for 2021 to be more in lines of 4 percent overall, and that's the, and the increase to the tipping fee, again, like, a, a component of that 4 percent. I can't, offhand, I don't recall. However, this year, we had a, a jump from $102 per ton tipping fee at, from the county to $150. Next year, it goes from, from $150 per ton to $155 per ton. So the increment starts to, to level out as we move forward in that project, and we'll see that reflected in the rates going forward.
Madam Mayor, just to add to that, so the, the big increases this year, or next year for the Resource Recovery Project, for that portion of it, which is that last row there, the expectation is that that will increase 3 percent per year. That was kind of in line with the way the bond debt service was structured, just kind of ramping up. We still have to provide for an increase to Marburg, so whatever CPI is, we multiply that by 70 percent, that'll be adding to that. So 3 percent plus whatever CPI is, it's going to be in the 4, maybe 5 percent range, and that should be stable. The, the only unknown is what may happen with recyclables that drives that tipping fee, are there any unexpected costs? But I think for now, we can expect, we see some stability in the recycling markets, and the project hasn't, hasn't started yet, so it's really just the bonds that are driving that, so I do expect 4 to 5 percent next year.
Thank you. You used the word I was going to go for is, after this year, with the large increase, the, the one, one-time large increase to get the project up and running, we're looking at more, to the extent that we can project it, stability in our rates for planning purposes for both residential and commercial businesses. So what are we doing in terms of any marketing or outreach so that the public understands that this large increase is, is for this year, but then that gets us to ability where we can have a more suitable or stable rate increase?
So, we are, again, right now, at the minimum, this is described to them as, as part of, it's the Prop 218 noticing, a description of the, of the project and, and how it's, it's driving the current proposed rates. We are also working jointly with the county for a rollout marketing campaign just around the, the Resource Center and the infrastructure that's coming and the changes to, to the programming as well. So that will tie back in to, to describing like the benefits of it and, and what we're paying for. And so that, that will be starting to roll out this summer as well.
Great. And to the extent that we can inform the public of the long-range implications of this and the stability that the rates bring, I think it helps.
Yes.
It helps that case. The one other question I had is actually, it just caught my eye, and it's in our budget binder on page G157. In fiscal year 18, under revenues, it says donations $522, and then amended fiscal year 19, it was $85,579, and then going forward to 2020, it's $87,000. What are donations, and why was there a big jump of $85,000?
So, thank you. So this was just a shift in where we were putting alignment of some revenue that, that we actually receive from Marburg to, to supplement our looking good in public education programming.
Oh, great. Well, I just want to say thank you to staff for all your work on this, and especially in regards to the Resource Recovery Project. I think, long-term, it will have a, a large benefit for our community, even going beyond the capacity of the landfill, in that we will have this, the material separator facility that will be beneficial in the long run for us and allows us greater diversion. So thank you for all your efforts on this.
Mr. Gutierrez? And we're taking questions and comments, because we have no public comment slips, I think, Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Excuse me, I'm still fighting an illness. When it comes to the dumping, I've had a couple residents give me the suggestion, or ask me if it was possible, for things like mattresses and couches, is there any way we could offer the resident an incentive to turn that in themselves, just like you would turn in aluminum cans or plastic bottles or glass? Is there any way to do that so that people would be less likely to just leave them on the side of the street?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez. It's an excellent point, and, and you're correct. So the state runs the California Redemption Value, the CRV program for, for bottles and cans, and, and it works quite well, and that, and the actual Marburg facility is one of the places where people can, can take them to, to redeem, to redeem them. For running a, a local program like that, I would say generally is, would be more complicated, and more analysis would need to be done to actually see how we would figure something like that out to administer and potentially reimburse someone. The good news is that we are seeing a reduction in illegal dumping, even around mattresses and couches, because as you point out, I mean, they are two of the more common materials that, that we collect. And we've seen just in, in the past two years, the numbers go down on, on them, I would, significantly, like, by 20 percent so far. So we feel like we're moving in the right direction around illegal dumping in terms of the work that we're doing, both on the street and services that Marburg's providing, and also the outreach that's going along. In addition, there is a program called Bye Bye Mattress that the state runs, and they fund free drop-off of mattresses at cer, at certified facilities. The Marburg facility is one of those that is certified, so, so residents can, can use that service as well, as, as another means to, to help get rid of, of the mattresses. So I would say in the, in the short term, programmatically, those are the three best options that, that we have.
Okay. So if it might be a little easier to administer, instead of them getting some kind of cash incentive, if they're a ratepayer already with Marburg, is there some way that they could get an incentive by having a decreased monthly rate if they turned in their own couches or, or mattresses?
Thank you. Again, I think one, one of the great benefits of the programs that we offer is that our customers can get up to two free bulky item collections every year. So I think that's a great incentive for them, that not have to pay. All they have to do is, is call Marburg and, and schedule the pickup, and, and they'll come right, right to their home for it. If they happen to live in apartment buildings, again, to reference back the pilot that we're working on right now with Marburg and the apartment buildings, is to have more proactive, regularly scheduled collection events at those apartments, and we're hoping that those will be successful as well.
And just kind of point out also, Councilmember Gutierrez, that oftentimes, the tenant is the one, isn't the one paying the bills, it's the landlord, so to provide a credit to the tenant would be a little, we couldn't do it, it would be giving a credit to the landlord, and whether that be passed down to the tenant, we're not sure. But we think there's a lot of opportunities for those, for places, for those things to go. A lot of it is education, and you can see in the chart that the education we've been doing, the outreach, has really helped and reduced the number of these sort of illegal dumpings, because we have informed folks of their ability to do these bulky item pickups, and people are taking advantage of those. Plus, the being able to deliver them free to Marburg today. Certainly, any kind of redemption that we would value, we provide would cost money, and we would have to compensate Marburg for that, so it'd be an increase in cost overall to all ratepayers for that. But I think what we're doing is great, and I think we should continue to monitor that to see how much progress, more progress we make on that.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I agree that the efforts you're putting in are starting to show, for sure. I, I've definitely been knocking on doors, and one resident would say, oh, I'm well aware, I already know the number to call, and then the other one would say, oh, I didn't know that I had two free dump pickups. So yeah, I, I have noticed that a lot more people are aware of the services that they have. I'm just trying to think of ways to just make it that much better. One thing I've noticed is that, especially in my district on the west side, the residents that live a block or two away from the train tracks have realized that instead of just dumping on the sidewalk, they'll just walk in a block and dump it over the fence onto Caltrans. But the issue is that you can see that from the freeway, or if you're on the train, you can see it from the train when you're going through. So what, what's the relationship we have with Caltrans when it comes to picking that stuff up from the tracks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez. We have, and, twofold. So we have an excellent relationship with, with Caltrans. They've been quite proactively working with us over the last almost two years now in coordinating and scheduling cleanups at the interchanges with both the on and off ramps. With Union Pacific, it has been more challenging, but as was mentioned earlier, that Jim Dewey from our, our Streets Division helped negotiate an agreement with them so that we have access to their property, and then there actually is some compensation back for city staff or contractors to be doing those cleanups. So I anticipate that in the coordinated effort that we've been doing, that that will just in, improve those cleanups along the tracks.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean Caltrans, I meant Union Pacific. So do they wait until somebody reports it, or is there somebody regularly traveling through there to, to see if? Because one worry I keep hearing from the residents that live along the tracks is that the people that dump their stuff on the other side of the fence, the homeless tend to collect it and start making, you know, housing out of it, basically. So it's a constant issue that I'm having to deal with, with the residents. So I was just wondering if there's somebody who regularly goes down the tracks to make sure that that's not happening?
So I would, I would say that it has, it's evolving, but it has been a combination of both being complaint-based and also investigated. And part of what we're learning, as we've learned over the last couple of years, is that we're having, we're getting a much better, again, like, sense of where those areas are, where they, they tend to occur. And because of that, we can map them, and then because of that, we can keep track of them better, and, and hopefully, like, keep them from growing into, to real nuisances. So that's, that's our ongoing goal in kind of like this coordinated effort in, in managing this program.
Thank you. And when, one thing I've been seeing lately are these large trucks that are picking up metal. What, what's our position as, as a city with those, with those individuals? Because I've been hearing complaints from residents that they're just walking onto their property and picking up bicycles or metal chairs and throwing them into the truck and, and driving off. So what, what do we do in that sense when, when people are doing that?
Well, if they're actually entering or coming on private property, that is an issue for, for, actually, for the police department. I mean, if they're coming on and, and taking property. And we certainly don't condone scavenging across the board. I mean, again, even though the commodities are not particularly valuable right now, once they go into a container, they, they are the property of, of Marburg, because part, and, because part of this whole system depends on being able to get those to market.
So even though you can see a vehicle is a scrap metal vehicle, the city doesn't have any right to ask them not to do that or to stop?
If they're taking material out of our containers, we do have the bill, yes, we should be telling them to stop.
Okay. But when, when you see that a truck's filled with scrap metal, and they even have a phone number spray painted on the side of the truck saying, call us if you have scrap, you know, scrap metal, and they're driving around neighborhoods, and we're getting reports of those trucks going onto private property, we can't actually do anything about that?
Mr. Dominguez, I, I would take that, take that up with one of the B coordinators on the, in the police department. That sounds like something that law enforcement should be addressing. I see the scrap metal guys, and wow, I hadn't heard that, that they were taking items they weren't supposed to. So that's theft.
Yep. I mean, they're allowed to do business, they have a business license, I'm sure, we can check that, but as long as they're illegally established business, you know, they can't do illegal things, and that's a PD matter, but that's not really a solid waste or environmental services matter. Them taking stuff from private property is theft.
Okay. And, and lastly, so there's no other options of what to Okay. And lastly, so there's no other options of what to do with our plastics right now, other than to bury them because of what China did with not, no longer accepting our plastics?
That's correct. There's absolutely no market, really globally, for what are known as plastics three through seven. Soda bottles and larger bottles, like detergent bottles, and those kinds of things, and toys, the harder plastics, there are still markets for those. We'll still collect those. They're known as plastics one and two. But the three through sevens, no, not with China and the rest of the Asian markets closing down. And honestly, even when they were being collected, the estimates are that only 25 to 30% of that material that was going to China or to Asia was really being recycled in the first place. They were either being burned or buried. It's kind of the, it's known as wish recycling, wish cycling, that we want these products to be recycled because they have a recyclable emblem on that, but really, they're incredibly low valued. And so that's the long answer for that.
Yeah, and in some ways, the fact that they were being burned, and now they're going to be buried, from an environmental perspective globally, much better that they're buried. It's inert in a landfill, doesn't even create methane gas. When they're burned, they create a lot of toxins in the air.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Ms. Nen.
Thank you. Two quick questions, and then some comments. On G158, I'm just noticing on the pounds of electronic waste being collected, the estimate goes way down, to about a third, and then not as dramatic of a decrease, but the hazardous waste collection also going down. I'm wondering, is it going somewhere else, or what are we attributing that to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nen. Yes, you're quite correct. We adjusted down quite dramatically the electronics recycling. It's a similar problem with the electronics. There, again, the Asian markets have collapsed, and at a time when, at one point, three or four years ago, you could make money from those materials. Now, it costs quite a bit to collect them and ship them off, and that there's very few, if any, markets really existing. So we chose not to renew the contract with our source provider, but we are still collecting them. So either through our existing program, like Curbside, or at the Marburg facility, electronics still can be taken there. But since we're not running our additional twice-a-year collection events in the city, we anticipate that overall, the total tonnage will be reduced, and that's why we adjusted that down.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, those are things we particularly need to keep out of the landfill because of reactions with other materials in the landfill, and...
So as they are collected by Marburg, either Curbside, or at their facility, or at the transfer station, they are still disposed of properly. So it's, we don't have to worry about them inadvertently ending up in the landfill, and we certainly don't want them in, just buried in, right, the trash cart itself. So that's why we still keep the specialized collection for them, and then we let the processor handle that.
Just to add, I think the measure is capturing what we used to be doing and collecting through these special e-waste events. We used to have them at the Sears parking lot twice a year. There was value to the vendor, then they started wanting to charge us, and the value's just gone down. But so there's still opportunities and places where they go. We just, we aren't doing anything extra, those collection events, to capture those extra tonnage. But we believe they're still being processed, because they're places for them to go. They're just not as convenient as what these events provided.
Are those something that would be separated out by the Marv? I mean, if somebody throws away their e-waste because there aren't these events anymore?
Yeah, good question, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nen. My guess is yes. I think, because I think we recognize that anything like that that gets in the landfill is not good, it's hazardous, or it's electronic waste. So my guess is that they'll be pulled out and then processed separately.
And is it in our best interest at all, as a community, to still hold one community event a year, or something to collect the hazardous waste or the e-waste? I think that's just such a big...
We haven't taken it completely off the table. I didn't mean to interrupt. But given that, of the substantial increase in costs to have a contractor run those events for us, we wanted to do more evaluation of the program, see how our current services were able to meet or not meet the community needs, and then evaluate whether to bring something back or not, and then if so, like, what that cost really would be, and how, you know, how we bear it, so.
I would just really welcome and appreciate that. I think that's a substantial number change, and I'm concerned of that winding up in the landfill, and people just sort of getting the message that, oh, nobody's taking it anymore, so I'll throw it away. I don't know. And just for comments, I really, really want to commend you, and thank you for the excellent work this year on the outreach and education with especially the expanded polystyrene. I mean, it's been really exciting to go anywhere and just see the different ways that businesses are addressing that issue, and the creative ways they have of packaging now. And I know you did a lot with businesses, and businesses really stepped up to make that happen. And I think even more than plastic straws, the expanded polystyrene, it was such a quiet ordinance that moved through and didn't get as much attention, but it really has such an enormous impact, and really appreciate that. And the work you did on the ordinance, too, back and forth, with that one and with the plastic straws. And I'm just excited to see the difference that that's making. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I really need to commend our entire division, because they do excellent work, and it's been a really busy year for them. And yeah, we should be really proud of them, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez?
I found the questions I was looking for. So the, on G157, the objective is enroll 100% of regulated retail food facilities. This is in the, it's the second one with the green leaf. In recycle and organics diversion programs by the end of 2020. And just to go to the slide, so recycling and organics are different, and I know our recycling is higher than the organics. So is the 100% really just either or, since our organics is more close to the 50%, because our goal is 100%?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. This is for, it is referring to organics for the retail food facilities. It is for food waste services. So that, it is particular, just to the food waste for that. And it would be 100% of the retail food facilities.
So I thought we were kind of stuck at a 50% level?
That's for overall diversion. This is for, this is a participation goal.
So even if they're not compliant, we give them...
We're looking for 100% compliance.
Sorry?
I'm sorry. We're looking for 100% compliance from those facilities, so that they all have those services, and they're using the organic services. It doesn't speak to whether they're meeting the 50% diversion or not.
Okay, so they can be in compliant, and we still recognize them as enrolled? Okay. And the, going to the stolen cans and bottles, do we have a number or any estimate of the people who are taking cans and bottles out of recycling bins, either public and private? And I've seen it happen on a daily basis, and I've seen it, usually someone's got a grocery cart that they've also stolen, and then they're stealing cans and bottles, and they're taking it to one of the two recycling agencies on the east side, and then they're ditching the shopping cart right in front of the facilities. So there's several crimes being committed. But I'm wondering, in terms of the economics, what do we know about the stolen cans and bottles? I know, because I went into the Marburg facility and just watched for an hour, several people came in and did this, and they were getting 50 to 60 bucks in money for the cans and bottles they were bringing in.
I actually have no information on hand about the level or the extent of either scavengers operating in the city, or those who are, you know, incidentally, like, picking up loose bottles and cans, and then collecting them for rebate at this time.
Mr. Samario, did you have an answer?
No, it's a tough thing to quantify, because I was just thinking to myself that maybe we can go to Marburg and ask them if they have any estimates, but how are they going to know what the source of those recyclables are from? And what's interesting is that to the extent that they take them out of the trash container, then that's, you know, we're not counting that money anyway, or may even save your processing costs. But we don't have that data. We can ask Marburg if that, the data, but I, my guess, it's going to be a difficult number to quantify, from an economic perspective.
And the total waste trend, I thought the table was very interesting that you provided, and it looks like people were producing more waste in 2004, 2005. And is that just a general trend statewide, that we're producing less trash?
That is, it's a common trend, yes. So as you saw, that we were kind of in that economic boom, and then after the Great Recession, you saw a dip overall in, and it sort of has leveled out, but we're not seeing like a rampant, you know, ramp up again. So I think partly because of the expansion of programs that's also happened over the last decade.
Okay. So that's it for my questions. My comments are, I'm very concerned, concerned about the concept of wish cycling, where I think a lot of our residents think that things they're throwing in the recycling bin will get recycled when they're not, and it sounds like we're going to reconcile some of that with the three to seven. But there's other things, like compost-friendly silverware. I know we're certifying restaurants, and when I read the fine print on the plastic bag with the compostable silverware, it said this had to be taken to an industrial composting facility. So again, this is something else that I think leads people to think we're doing better than we are. Our goals are all flat, whether it's mixed recycles diverted, stays at 20,000, food scraps stays at 3,300, and then the electronics waste is just incredible how that drops from 346,000 to 100,000. So I see in Santa Barbara, a great community willing to go the extra mile to be environmentally friendly, and yet I see our goals are all flat. And I know, in some perspectives or in some regards, maybe we're ahead of other communities, but it just, it saddens me that we're not pushing harder to do more to, for example, reduce the waste stream to begin with, and to see numbers that are just going to continue flat lines like this. So I don't know if there's anything we can do, or if I just have to be realistic, but it is of deep concern, particularly given what we see in the oceans, in terms of plastic will exceed the number of pounds of plastic, will exceed the number of pounds of fish by 2050, I've heard. And I know, obviously, it's not Santa Barbara that's the cause of that, but it's things we could do here to fix our problem, that other communities might be able to borrow, that I'd love to work on. Domestic composting, it sounds like we're not going to do that because of our investment in the TRRP. But I just wonder if there's anything we can do, if we're going to be introduced to the Cool Blocks program, I don't know if that's, would allow our residents, our community, to fight a little harder against these problems?
Just as a quick response, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it's a little beyond this, although I was talking about program highlights today, a little beyond the scope of the conversation today, and we did end up focusing on the three through seven plastics. We actually do have a comprehensive, like, program around what are really not recyclable and will be considered recyclable. That will all come out as part of actually a really comprehensive media and marketing campaign starting this summer, and our messaging continues to be focusing on the hierarchy around waste reduction. And so we will be pushing, I think, more messaging and programming around that as well. So I don't want to leave you this impression that we're not looking at that and being forward-thinking. It just was a little beyond talking about some of the specifics of the successes that we've done in this past fiscal year, so.
And I appreciate the marketing efforts, but I think they're just playing catch-up. You know, even at Earth Day, when I asked people informally about recycling policy, I got so many different answers. So I think we're just getting people caught up to what we do recycle, much, you know, not actually creating new programs or doing anything that I think Santa Barbs would feel proud of. So that's just my concern.
Okay, thank you for that. So, Mr. Samario, we renegotiate the contract with Marburg 2023? Do I have that right?
I believe that's right, Madam Mayor.
All right. So is that a time when we can look ahead? One of the, it was a west-side resident that said, "What if someone got $10 for every mattress?" They would take a truck, and they would go around, and they would get, you know, they would make money that way. So I don't know. I'm just saying, if we're looking ahead, I know we're in 2019, but maybe the new, maybe the new contract would give us some new opportunities to negotiate with Marburg. I assume they want to continue to be our trash hauler.
It totally makes sense.
And that would give us an opportunity to create new programs. So we'll go ahead and close that item, and thanks for your hard work, and everybody for your participation. It was a good discussion. And we have one more item, one more department coming up, the waterfront department.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Got the management team from the waterfront department here, as you noted, to give the 2020 budget recommendation. In terms of personnel, we have 47 approved positions, and nine of those up on the screen there are harbor patrol officers. We have 10 positions approved in harbor patrol, but we haven't been able to fill that 10th one. We're in a recruitment process right now.
Okay.
This is the organizational chart for the department. And again, we have the three divisions that we'll be focusing on today, with the three managers here with us.
And that's my cue. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Brian Bossy, I'm the waterfront business manager. And we're going to jump right into our expenditures for the year, proposed expenditures, I should say, for fiscal year 2020. I should let you know that in the lower right, generally the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a page reference, and that is referring to your budget binder. So if you want to follow along that way, you can. And we'll kind of go back and forth from the front of the binder to our, back to our departmental section. So as far as expenditures are concerned, we're looking at a little over $15.1 million. And we have it broken down here into each of the individual sections of the waterfront department. And you'll also see next to the dollar figure what percent that is of the overall expenditure budget. So admin and support and community relations, they make up 18.5% of those expenditures. Our property management, which manages 65 separate leases, as well as about 70 business activity permits, is 3.6%. Our financial management, that's our accounting staff, is 2.6%. Parking services, 8.3%. They manage eight different lots and over 2,000 public parking spaces. Our harbor patrol, those are the men and women who keep everything safe and sound down at the harbor. They are responsible for 17.5%. Our marina management, that's pretty much everything to do with slips, slip fees, and everything in between, make up 2.4%. Our facilities maintenance, as you can imagine, keeping things nice and up and running and beautiful down at the waterfront with the salt air, and salt water is very difficult. They take about 31.4% of that expenditure budget, and they do a great job making sure things are working and operable. And then our facilities design and capital, that's 15.6%. Jumping back to the departmental section of the budget binder, page G458, this is a different way to look at our proposed expenditures. On the left, you'll see the different categories. Actually, I had wanted a different one. Anyways, so this is just a different way to look at it, as far as our amended budget for fiscal year 19, our proposed budget for 20, and then the change as a dollar figure, as well as the change in percentage. And I, I'm sorry, we had a different slide that we wanted to slide in there that has, it actually breaks it down into salaries. So if you want everything from salaries and benefits, supplies and services, so more on a categorical item.
Mr. Bossy, Councilmember Nen has a question.
Just really quickly, I don't believe we have a G458.
That's, that's exactly, that's what I was saying. We put in a new slide, apparently it didn't get... We put in a new slide, apparently it didn't get uploaded to this particular, for this particular one. But yes, so the one I have is a little different than yours. Sorry about that. We updated it over the weekend because basically this is just a reiteration of what you saw on the previous slide. And there is no G458. It should be, I was trying to get it to G460 and separate it into salaries, benefits, supplies, services, a different type of breakdown for you. Instead of section, it was more categorical.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. But overall, if you can picture that, if you're on page 460, G460, we're looking at about a 1% increase in our overall expenditures. Our salaries and benefits go up approximately 4%. Again, don't pay attention to the one on the screen here. Big changes, we don't really have a whole lot. Our special projects go down by about $100,000. That's due to, in fiscal year 19, the Waterfront Department, along with a number of other departments, contributed to about $50,000 for the marketing campaign for Visit Santa Barbara that followed Thomas Fire and the Montecito debris flow. So that's not in the FY '20 budget, so that's a change. Our debt service numbers stay relatively flat. Our non-capital equipment goes up a little bit there, about the tune of $70,000, a good portion of that, $50,000. We're going to, with our parking equipment, we have to replace it every certain number of years. It's usually good for about five. We can usually milk it for about seven. So we're going to be replacing our parking control equipment this particular coming year at Harbor Main. That's the gates, the software programs, the loops, the cameras that keep everybody coming in and out of the harbor 365 days a year, and that is open 24 hours a day. So sorry about that miscue on the expenditure side of things. But again, about 1.5% increase in overall expenditures. As far as revenues are concerned, the opposite, the other side of the budget equation, we're looking at about $15.7 million. And this is referring to page C11 of your budget document, and just going in a clockwise manner from your upper right, our commercial leases, this is both Sterns Wharf as well as the harbor combined. Those make up about 11.9% of our overall revenues. Leases, that's again Sterns Wharf and the harbor combined, 21.7. Leases other, these are the things that don't easily fit into a commercial or food, and those are things like the Santa Barbara Yacht Club, UCSB Sailing. We have a number of governmental organizations that lease office space from us. NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has an office lease with us, and a couple other folks, as well as our Marine Spill Response Company, who we have a lease with. Then we have our parking fees, which again, over 2,000 spaces and eight different lots, those equal about 20% of our revenues. Our slip rentals, 1,143 slips in the harbor generate about 30% of our overall revenue. Our visitor fees, these are people just coming through and stopping in and staying for a day or two, or maybe 28, and everything in between, they make up about 3.3%. Our slip permit transfer fees, that's when slips change hands, that's, we're estimating that at about $1 million. Our live-aboard fees, a very small 1.1%, but a very important source of revenue. These are about 100 folks in the harbor who call their boats their home and live on there full-time. And in miscellaneous, this category, the overwhelming majority, I believe it's over $400,000, comes from cruise ship revenue that we receive. Right here is referring to page G460, and this is the proposed revenues, and this one is correct. And it's just broken down separately, just a different way of looking at it. Our fees and service charges equal about the proposed change in revenues, what we're amended, projected, and then moving into 2020, about a 3% change. That's everything from our slip fees, slip transfer fees, live-aboard fees, visitor, and all of our parking, that's what fees and service charges are. Our interest income, this is handled by our finance department, and we're getting a nice little bump, proposed bump there. Our lease income, again, this is both on the food and the commercial side, as well as the retail side, relatively flat. That's kind of what we're projecting. We've kind of seen both on the commercial side and the retail side and food side kind of level out for, over the last few years. And then other revenue, again, this is where cruise ships fit in, as well as our business activity permits. We're proposing or estimated about $539,000 for fiscal year 2020. About, I believe, 400 of that actually is made up from cruise ship revenue, so by far the majority there. So overall, we're looking at about 3% increase in what we see as our proposed revenues for fiscal year 2020.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Carl Triberg, the Waterfront Facilities Manager. This upcoming fiscal year, we want to implement the Marina Electric Submetering Program. The four marinas in Santa Barbara Harbor are the third highest, have the third highest use of electricity in, of all the city facilities, but behind El Estero and the airport terminal. We've been working on this for nine years. We're authorized under Harbor Navigation Code to go and charge each individual slip holder for the electricity they use. We've had these meters in for several months now, and recently did our cost analysis. We spend about $180,000 a year on electricity. About $133,000 of that is used by the actual slip holders themselves. There are some things to take into consideration. Live-abords, they actually pay a surcharge of $150 a month. If you back out and average out their use, it's about $33,000. You really can't charge visitors for electricity on short stays, so we back that out. We have some nominal administrative costs, so we expect to net back about $83,850 in revenue. This is a new fee and a new revenue stream, and there are some budgetary impacts related to it that Brian's going to describe to you in just a moment.
So that's a nice segue into our proposed fee adjustments for fiscal year 2020. The first is our slip rental fee. We, for the past, I believe, nearly 10 years, have increased this about two, actually 2% every year, based on this new electric submetering program. We, part of us trying to kind of alleviate the sting that this will have on slip permities, we're reducing that this particular year to 1% instead of the 2%. We'll go, our plan next year is to go back to the 2% and get back on track. Our slip permit transfer fee, this is when slips change hands. We're proposing, similar to the past, I believe it's about eight fiscal years, a $25 per foot increase on that fee, and that would take it to an even $500. This does not include your smaller slips, the 20s, the 25, the 28-foot, and the 30-foot, as well as our commercial fishing berths. You can see that noted at the bottom. Another proposed fee increase is our West Beach Rack Permit. These are the racks primarily used by the various clubs out on West Beach for kayaks and canoes. They hold eight kayaks or canoes, whatever you choose to put in there, and we're proposing a $50 increase on those. They currently stand at $1,100 per rack, so this would take it to 1,150. As Mr. Triberg mentioned, institute the slip electric submetering fee. And again, similar to the slip permit rental fee, we're going to, or slip rental fee, kind of to help with that initial sting, is reducing the monthly live-aboard fee from $150 to $120. That's generally about what these folks are going to be paying in electric. Kind of depends on the size of the boat. So those are our proposed fee adjustments for fiscal year 2020.
We have a question.
Just on, with a 1% increase and then the, going to 2% due to the electricity, how does that affect our commercial? Is there different rates, or is this affects everyone the same, for our commercial fishermen?
The rates for electricity would be the same.
The rates for electricity, I'm talking about the slip rental fee, because you said it's only 1% this year due to the change in the electricity, correct? And then it's 2%. So is there any, is there any difference in this for the commercial fishermen? And what's the, and how often do they use electricity versus just a non-commercial fisherman?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, everybody's going to have to pay the same. In general, the commercial fishermen don't use very much electricity, but there are a few that use their boats as almost like a processing plant and use a tremendous amount of electricity. We've let them know what we're doing, and they support that, and that's part of doing business. But it'll be, it'll be the same for everybody. Everybody will pay their proportional use for electricity. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. And then what we like to do every year is what kind of impact, look at what kind of impacts this has on the various slips. And we do a survey of 18 marinas up and down the coast of California, basically from Santa Cruz down to Oceanside, a mixture of both public and private marinas. I believe we're up to about 15 pages of information, everything from slip fees to what they charge for parking and everything in between. So this is what a 1% would have on, on the various slip lengths. So everything from a 25-foot, your change per month would be $2.34. A 60-foot would be $7.50. And then obviously, your larger ones at 100 feet would be a little bit more than that. Moving into our capital program for fiscal year 2020, which I know you folks have seen quite a bit of the city's capital program. So what we fund, or how we fund our capital projects, primarily from two different sources, our surplus revenue or our reserves above policy, and then our capital reserve, which is also known as our harbor preservation fund. And with that, Carl, I'll touch a little bit on our capital program.
Our capital program, there are several projects that you see every year, such as Sterns Wharf timber pile replacement, marina renovation, where we rebuild docks incrementally, parking lot maintenance. We have seven parking lots, and that fee alone varies from a low of $70,000 to a high of about $350,000. But some of the new projects I'd like to mention to you this evening is, the main one is the replacing the ice house at the very bottom. The ice house was built in 1995. It was funded through grant funds that Mick Cronman helped secure many, many years ago. It's, it's very old and it's unreliable, and our commercial fishing fleet rely heavily upon it. So we're really working hard on a design to get it, I see you already left it. We're working very hard to get a new design and get it replaced this year. We also have another program, a project of notice, updating our security camera system. It's quite outdated, and supervisor, Harbor Patrol Supervisor Eric Angerbretson and I are working with the Department of Homeland Security on some grant funds for that. This is, the $150,000 is just the first year. There's actually another year of $250,000. It's pretty, it's a pretty involved and detailed project that we want to update across the entire waterfront, and there's great interest from the Department of Homeland Security to support us on that. That's in general what we have for 2020. The next fiscal year is almost exactly the same amount, $2 million. We continue to invest in our capital facilities as much as we can, and we're fortunate that we have the money to do so.
Okay. And moving on to our performance objectives, I've put together a number of bullets here, just some interesting ones. And at the end of each bullet, you'll see where this particular item comes from. So first up, we have Communicate Harbor News and Information with the Boating Public through our Dock Lines Newsletter. This was the creation a number of years ago by our own Mick Cronman, and we do this three times a year, winter, spring, and summer, we publish this. And we run about 1,350 copies each time around, and we also have it available on our webpage. In regards to parking, we're very focused on customer service as a department as a whole, but especially parking, those are usually when you come to visit, the first people you see, and the last people you see when you come down to the waterfront. So we want you to have a pleasant, as pleasant, as pleasant of an experience as possible. So one of those is customer service, and it's returning 95% of our customer phone calls within 24 hours. Our staff does an amazing job of that. Last year, they actually returned, out of 845 calls, 838 were turned, returned within 24 hours. So we are very responsive and do what we can to make people's experience down at the waterfront a good one. We also achieve an average of 80 training hours per officer in our Harbor Patrol Division per year. That's an amazing amount of training. That's what keeps them on top of everything. And these folks, again, these men and women do a great job keeping the waterfront safe and secure, and are amazing with the public. Again, along the lines of customer service, when people come to visit, as I showed you earlier, we generate about almost $600,000 in visitor fees, and we want to get those people into their slips as quick as possible. We process 96% of visitor slip assignments within 30 minutes. So once they pull up to our accommodation dock and head on up to our offices, we want to get them out and back into their slips so they can go out and enjoy everything that Santa Barbara has to offer. Speaking more along the lines of facilities and what amazing work these folks do, one of their goals next year is replacing 10 marina fingers on Marina Four, and they do this themselves, construct it, demo, take it apart, construct a new one, bring it back out. They do amazing handiwork. They're amazing folks. And lastly, keeping the wharf up and running, an important part of our city as a whole. We have our facilities folks inspect a minimum of 500 wooden piles per year on Sterns Wharf. We have, this is the latest in our budget tour fiscal year 2020. We've been to the Harbor Commission on a number of occasions. We've met with the city administrator. And on the 21st of March, with our Harbor Commission, they moved a forward recommendation to you all for approval of the Waterfront Department's proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. And with that, as Mr. Friedman said, we have our management staff here, as well as Mr. Angerbretson, our Harbor Patrol Supervisor, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your energy level today. I don't see any lights. I guess the first thing I would say is I don't get any complaints about the harbor. So that's, really makes me happy. Ms. Sneddon has a question. We'll start off with her.
I have one question, and then I have a comment. So I know we're working with Sea Level Rise Committee, and I know you're extensively part of the conversation, but long-term planning, budgeting, at this point, I know this is a two-year budget, but could you just discuss some of that impact?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, obviously, the waterfront's going to be impacted as much and more than any other department in the city. One thing we've been working on and an avenue to explore, and we'll talk a little bit more about this with our Sea Level Rise Committee, is harbor works and improving harbor works are the kind of work that the Corps of Engineer does. We met with Congressman Carver Hall last year, Scott and I did, and talked a little bit about possibly getting a congressional authorization to fund a study, reconnaissance or feasibility study, to look at what it would take to improve the harbor to withstand rising sea levels. That's something we're going to recommend going forward with at this point, and hopefully get them engaged and interested. No one's really done it yet, and there's a lot of talk about it and a lot of studies. And as you know, there's an adaptation plan that I believe we're going to try and finish by the end of summer. And we were hoping at that point that we might be explicit enough in it. It's, in general, it's kind of vague, but I think for the harbor, we could be somewhat explicit and describe actually what you need to do in raising the breakwater and those sorts of things. And if we have a document like that, I'm hoping we can go to the Corps and get them interested in doing a study for us. They do this in other areas for hurricanes in the South and other areas. So it's, that would be our, kind of our first recommendation as far as funding large-scale projects. And that's pretty much the extent of what Scott and I have discussed in the last several years of moving down that avenue first before setting up reserve funds or anything like that, because people have talked a lot about that, but I don't think the plans are completed enough to really dedicate funds towards what exactly we're going to do, because we're not quite sure what we're going to do.
Well, excellent. That's really forward-thinking. And do you need any additional funds to be able to go after the funds for a feasibility study or for anything?
We don't know yet. Sometimes when you have authorizations for these kind of studies, there are cost-share arrangements. Sometimes they'll take it on all on their own, but we really, we really won't know until we apply. And this is the type of funding would come through the Water Resources Development Act, which is an annual appropriation, but it's probably a couple of years down the road.
And I'll just follow up. If you've saw on an earlier slide, the reserve levels and reserves above policy are in good condition. So I think if there is some matching funds to graph to those types of studies, they'll be able to respond.
Thank you. And then I just want to say that I just, the customer service orientation at the harbor, I mean, it's just so phenomenal. Every time I go in there, every time, not just in the parking, but, you know, renewing the slip or the permits and all of it, it's just such a happy place to be, and it's really, I don't know, some favorite places.
Very good. Mr. Dominguez? Questions and comments? We don't have public comment speakers, slips, so.
So, Mr. Bossy, just a quick question on the revenue, the total number. It's different on C11 and G. It's different on C11 and G4, I forget, the first, 460. Is that because the C11 includes a few more categories of revenue, or was one of these just newer?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I had the exact same question when I got my budget book, and thanks to the folks at the Finance Department, we walked through it. And the difference between C11 and C460 is $38,600. And if you look, it's because two categories on C11 aren't included at the departmental level back on G460. And those include $8,400, which is interest on our Harbor Patrol Vessel Replacement Fund, and then $30,200, which is interest on our Harbor Preservation Fund. And so those are shown upfront, kind of revenues from the city side of things, and then, but they're, they're not shown as actual department revenues in the back.
Great. Questions on the organizational objectives? So on G463, ensure that 85% of department program objectives are achieved. Is that just talking about overall, the measurable objectives, or just within administrative support?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's for everything. So our admin folks, especially our admin analyst, kind of make sure everybody's going in line with their P3s and keeps everybody on task. So it's for the entire department as a whole.
Great, thank you. And regarding the patrol unit, looks like those are new performance measures, these numbers, 2,800 motor patrols, 3,200 foot patrols, 1,800 boat patrols. Are those new numbers? And is that just a number of people times how many patrols are doing, or how did we come up with those?
I'll start off before Mr. Ingebretson hops in, but as you recall, I believe it was last fiscal year, we went through a whole redo of our performance objectives, the city as a whole. So that, at that time, we took the opportunity to get rid of old ones that weren't, didn't make a whole lot of sense anymore or had been accomplished, and then added some new ones. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ingebretson.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, those numbers are just brought up over time and averages. Right now, we're an officer down, so we still try to hit the averages that we've had over the years. So we're on track.
Okay, great. And, and I do want to recognize the Department for conscientiously looking at your objectives and constantly refreshing them, and they're very meaningful and keep up the good work. Your department seems like it's, it's doing a great job. Thank you all.
Mr. Friedman?
Well, this brings back memories to my Harbor Commission days almost 10 years ago, but same team back from, back then, so you have a lot of continuity. You do a great job year in and year out. Two quick questions on page G464. We note that there are 30 projected 40,000 cruise ship passengers. How many cruise ships are there now that we anticipate?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, great question. Over the last two years, the cruise ship industry as a whole has been restructuring itself. A number of companies have bought other companies, and they, and because of that, they've been repositioning their global fleet. And so for the last two fiscal years, including the one we're currently in, we've seen a drop off of the number of cruise ships that have come to Santa Barbara. This year, I believe, we're at 21, where in the past, we were more about the 28, 27 average. So for next year, we're, they've done the repositioning, it'll get back to normal, if you will, and we're expecting, I believe it's 26 cruise ships, a varying size.
Great. And then my other question, with the stronger winter this year, I know in the past, a major issue has been the abandoned boats, in particular on East Beach and out in the Falls Anchorage. Did we see an uptake in the number of boats this year, or where were we with that?
I defer to Mr. Mick Cronman, our Operations Manager.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, actually, it's going the other way, and if you'll allow me a brief sidebar on that. In the past several years, dating all the way back to 2006, we've been fortunate enough to obtain grants from what was formerly the Department of Boating on Waterways, and now Division of Parks, is the Division of Boating and Waterways. And I won't, I won't swamp you with acronyms, but it used to be just for abandoned boats, and then, then they realized, and with a lot of input from harbor masters up and down the coast, that if people were allowed to surrender their boats and, for free, to various coastal agencies and have them disposed of, they wouldn't end up in anchorages and they wouldn't end up on the beach. That was called the Vessel Turn-in Program. Sorry, I lied about the acronyms. Eventually, they combined those two programs, and so what we found, and this was in my Clean Marina Report a few weeks ago, is that the more people are turn, more people are turning in their boats, instead of the dollar boat syndrome, when somebody wants a new boat, they sell it to somebody for a buck, functionally, you know, five bucks, 100 bucks, and it ends up in the East Beach Anchorage, and then ends up on the beach in winters like we had that you just described. So what we're seeing now is far fewer boats in the East Beach Anchorage dramatically. I remember days early in my career when there'd be 60, 80 boats plus in the anchorage. These days, we're seeing numbers in the teens. And we, and on top of that, we try to get folks, now that the forecasting is so good, we get folks into the harbor before the storms hit. So long way of saying that the numbers are actually going down despite the weather and the, and the tough winter.
Great, that's great to hear. I know that was an issue years ago, and when I worked at the county, it was always an issue. It's very, it's promising, especially this year. I didn't really recall seeing that many boats. I remember, like you said, sometimes a storm come up and there'd be three or four on the beach from the same storm. So thanks for providing that information. Appreciate all the work you were doing on it.
Well, Mr. Casey?
If I could just chime in, just real quick, Madam Mayor, because you mentioned that you get very few complaints about the harbor. I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to say that that has not always been the case, for those of us who've been around a while.
Uh-oh.
15 years ago, the harbor and issues at the harbor were some of the most contentious issues that you would see in the city council from any number of fronts. And just over time, with the staff and leadership, Mr. Friedman and the team that you've seen here, they've really kind of settled things down into a professional, really well-run department. And we should, we should celebrate the fact that you don't get many complaints from the waterfront, because that hasn't always been the case. So I just wanted to give them some recognition and appreciation.
Thank you for that. So my compliments to Mr. Friedman for a well-run department and really one of the assets that our visitors really enjoy. And I'm with Councilmember Sneddon, I get down there as, as often as I can. So we'll go ahead and close that budget hearing, and we're done for the day. And Mr. Casey, we have a city council meeting tomorrow, and then on Wednesday at 2:30, we're back here in this room, and the budget hearing is for Parks and Recreation, and that includes creeks and golf funds. So stay tuned, and we will adjourn until tomorrow at 2:00. Thank you.